Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to this Thursday, December, I'm losing track of dates, December 3rd Retreat of the Tacoma School District Board of Directors. We have a really great agenda tonight. The center of our focus tonight will be around at the whole moving the boards, planning around our annual goals and objectives forward, but really honing in on doing some shared learning around issues of racial equity, racial justice, and training that's been happening in the district, just trying to get the board grounded in what's moving at the state level around these topics so that we can have some context for how we want to move our goals forward for this year. So with that, I just, in the interest of time, I just want to turn it over to Superintendent Santoro to introduce our first panel of team members and the first topic.
Thank you. Tom, could you, could you put the slides up for me, please? So we're going to be hearing the Equity Design Team today, and I'm so excited about having you meet each one of these folks as they've been critical, not her. Not yet. The design, that's totally distracting. The, the design team has been critical to pay to, to working on this work. So my job is to tell you about three things. That's to introduce the team members and also talk to you a little bit about process and the why. I'm going to start with the first slide, Tom, I think, is the land acknowledgement. And I want to give you just a little bit of context about this. We believe that the land acknowledgement is really the beginning, is a part of, is a component of being culturally responsive. And so the director, Cobb, and I were talking about it right or anything about using the land acknowledgement. You use people, you hear people use it pretty frivolously. So I just wanted to say that we wanted to include it tonight because we believe that it is real important as far as recognizing, you know, recognizing our native, especially our Pu'ala tribe. But we also know that we need to add some context and that we need to do some teaching with our students and our staff and our parents about the relevance of this. But tonight, I'm just going to read it, knowing that we need to do more of that context work. The TPS land acknowledgement statement, and Tom, it's on the next slide, is that Tacoma Public School acknowledges that we are on the traditional and historical lands of the Pu'ala tribe of Indians. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the Pu'ala tribe. This acknowledgement serves as a first step in honoring our nearest, our nearest tribal neighbors and partners, the Pu'ala tribe of Indians, and give thanks for them allowing us passage to their lands. We will make intentional efforts to create inclusive and respectful partnerships that honor the indigenous, excuse me, indigenous cultures, histories, identities, and sociopolitical realities. So thank you. The next slide is the introduction of our team, and I'm going to ask them just to turn on their, you know, turn on their camera when I bring their name. What's great about this list is it's a real diverse group of people, and I want you to know that this is a combination of people who just outright volunteered and say, I want to be a part of this, and others that were volunteered because we knew that they had incredible expertise and that they were doing amazing things with their staff or with their department. So it's a combination of strong people. They've been working hard since the, the, sometime in 2019, we were having a discussion about when it actually happened. But it's important to me to let you know that it happened before COVID, you know, before all the racial injustice and things came up, that this team had gotten together to talk about, hey, it's time to take Tacoma to the next level. So Erin Wilkins, Principal at Bose Elementary. Can you show your face?
I'm there.
Okay, maybe that I'm not going to be able to see it. Okay. Bernadette Ray, the principal at Wilson High School. Josh Zarley, the principal at Mason Middle. Patrick K. Jack, the principal at Meeker Middle.
Hello.
Oh, no, he's not. Wait. Yeah, there he is. Okay. Hi. Hi, Pat. Lauren Taylor, the principal at Manitou, Manitou Park Elementary. Renell, the principal at Bernie Elementary. Kristy King, principal at Lister Elementary. Kiani Lee, Assistant Principal at Lincoln. Katrina Tuggle, at Assistant Principal at Lister. Marie Behar, who is the Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning. Manon Hodge, Executive Director, ELL and Global Ed Programs. Rita Chudry, Executive, Executive Director of SPED, Title I, and LAP. Amanda Scott-Thomas, who is the Partnerships Director. Tammy Larson, the Program Alignment and Student Support Director. Constance Da, the Principal of Franklin Elementary. Justina Johnson, who's not written on there because she graciously gave her name tied to Constance, but Justina Johnson, the avid and advancement programs Equity Director. Forrest Greek, who's the Labor Relations and Whole Educator Director. And Laura Allen, the Whole Child Director. So those are the people that came together and decided, yeah, that answered a call to take Tacoma to the next step. And so the beginning of that process was really just to, the brainstorming, and you're going to, it was led by Jamad, who you're going to meet in a minute. And we really wanted to know what is the critical work that needed to be done next? And we really ended up doing some, the process really started with some incredible professional development. And I'm real, I really want each one of the board members to have an opportunity to delve in that. It won't be tonight, but just want you to know that it's available and it's work, you know, that you can do. And then, of course, you know, what we needed was a why. So why should we do this now? You know, why is this the next step? And I'm just going to watch you, I'm going to have you watch just snippets, snippets of a video that this design team asked me to do right before we started the professional development with our principals and our directors. So Tom, could you play the video now, please?
Hello. This is Carla with an important and, I think, exciting message. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to share it. If you have been in Tacoma for a while, you know that equity is a priority in all of its facets, and you know that it is everyone's work. Well, I believe that as a system, we are all committed. What we haven't had is consistent messaging, consistent language, or consistent strategies. Policy 3111, our equity policy, certainly speaks to our core values around equity. It includes quality instruction for all, cultural understanding, rigor and relevance, accountability, and transparency. This fall, a committed group of TPS employees formed the Equity Design Team. Our task was to build a framework that will more clearly define our equity work and build consistency across our system. To accompany this framework, the team has developed strong professional learning modules that can be completed virtually at your own pace. We want every TPS employee to participate in this self-guided professional development as an unbiased learner in the coming months. The PD includes three professional learning modules that will be rolled out over the 2021 school year. The first module is created to support the first pillar of equity, cultural responsiveness. The goal is to improve our awareness and common understanding about becoming more culturally proficient.
We have people that are doing great things, but it's uneven. We don't have a common vocabulary. And so what I wanted to do is to say, hey, it's time to make this mandatory for everybody. And it's not a choice, that we all have to move forward. We have to have a common vocabulary. We have to learn all the facets of a, of a, an equity system and that we have to demonstrate it on a full basis. And we're going to be in different places, but we have to be able to self-assess, make sure that we move along that continuum and make it a difference. To the principals, we were, I wanted to be really clear that it's got to be your leadership. And you may not be an expert on it, but get to be an expert because we're going to move forward and we have to be, we have to have you be before us. We're going to support people. We're going to, you know, we're going to give them the things they need to move, but we, the main message was, it's time to move and we're going to do that. And so in order for us to really craft that work, we had to have a leader who has done this work and could really help us design what it looked like. So Marie, will you, will you introduce Jamad for us, please? Jamad Kenley.
I would love to. Jamad Kenley has worked alongside educators in Tacoma Public Schools for over seven years. I consider Jamad that gentle but persistent voice nudging us and empowering us to improve outcomes for all of our students, especially our students who are underperforming. He is not afraid to ask the tough questions, those that encourage us to dig deeper and get real with the work. Jamad is the president and the CEO of Potential Unleashed. His organization currently works with schools, colleges, and universities throughout the United States, Mexico, Guatemala, Kenya, and the Bahamas. His ability to form strong partnerships, like the partnership we have in Tacoma, and his dedication is improving thousands, millions of lives of our children. So we are honored and so, so, so thrilled to have Jamad be a part of this work, walking alongside us, holding our hands as we've pulled this together. So Jamad would like to just share a few things with you.
Yes, thank you. Thank you so much for that really warm and great introduction, Marie. I appreciate it. I laugh because that's always the most uncomfortable part of any presentation for me. So, but really, really good to be here with you all tonight, to see all of the, the directors from the school board. And Carla, thank you for inviting me here as well. So my role in, in this work is one that I'm really, I was really happy to be a part of. When I first came onto this team, it was explained to me a little bit about the vision. And the vision was that Tacoma was ready to escalate the work of equity throughout the district. And as Superintendent Carla mentioned, you know, really making sure that everyone understood that equity was everyone's work. And I thought that this was extremely important work and that it was being done in a great way because it was being led from the superintendent. And that's something that's really important. When we look at how this work plays out throughout districts, throughout the country, we know this, that it can start from a lot of different places, but if it does not have the support of the type of leadership, and if it's not spearheaded there, then it often is not scalable and sustainable. So a couple of things that I'll just mention really fast, and then I will move out of the way here. A couple of things. One, I think that the way that the team was structured is extremely strategic, being that there are principals and assistant principals and also district-level leadership as a part of this, because it really does take that type of, of team to bring it together. It can't be only school-led, and it can't be only district building-led. It needs to be a combination. And that's how the team has really worked. The other thing that was really important when we first started this work, as was mentioned, we, we didn't hop in and say, let's make some modules. It was very clear that the team wanted to really wrestle with what makes this work meaningful and how do we deliver it in a meaningful way. So we went through some really strenuous professional development, shared some information, I believe that will come up later on, on an article that we used, and looking at some of the different buckets that really lead to, again, successful, scalable equity designs for districts to really move the needle and move the numbers for students and families in the, in the district. Things around cultural responsiveness, differentiation, allocation of resources, and use of data. And the last thing that I'll mention as well on this was, one of the things that became very clear in the design was, as we talked about this, was that this could not and was not desired to be a check the box. That we did not want to create and design something that people could simply just check the box and say, oh, yeah, I did that. But that it needed to be something that was deeper and that was embedded in the culture of the schools. And so as we designed, that was at the very core of the design. How do we create something that's truly going to make a difference and that people couldn't just go by and go, yeah, I checked the box, I did that. But the question became, after you watched the video or after you watched the module, how does it inform pedagogy? How does, how does it change relationships in the school buildings with the families and in the communities? And so it's been a really great process. I'm looking forward to the continued work that we're going to do together. So thank you.
Thank you, Jamad. Next, next up, I believe our principals are going to talk a little bit about what they did. The Principal's Voice, Constance, can we start with you?
Thank you so much for the opportunity to share. The prompt that I was given was, why did I ask to be on this team? And I did ask. I was actually so pleasantly surprised in one of the district community engagement sessions that, that Carla hosts periodically with our families to hear about this work. And I was really excited because I feel like this is the purpose of public education. And when I was a, before, when I was an undergrad at University of Washington, music education major, I learned about residential schools in Tacoma and how children from indigenous communities from all over the country were brought to Tacoma and had the experience that, that was designed to strip them, them from their culture and strip their culture from them. And I really believe that that is a, an extension of a genocide. And we have a responsibility to answer for wrongs that have been done within, within and to our community. As, as educators, we have the chance to resolve, answer to, be, be responsive to, and seek healing from the challenges that our community has wrought against itself. And so when I learned that this team was gathering, that this team was working already before I even joined, to really take specific actionable steps to build a more perfect, more just Tacoma Public School system, to respond to the challenges that have been facing, that we've faced as a community in pockets, to respond to the discrepancies of our teaching practices that result in disproportionality in our students' performance data, to respond to the, the, just inequality that is pervasive in our, in our culture, that is a team I have to be able to be a part of, that I want to contribute to. I am really honored to serve in this school district, to be a part of a work that's so authentic, that isn't that, like, set off to the side in a department, but is really responsive and building authentically within schools, within teams. And I hope that these modules that we create are a beginning to a transformation of our district. And I'm really proud to be a part of that work and that this work is happening in our school district. So thank you so much, Carla, for allowing me to join. And thank you to Justina for your leadership for years now within this, within our school district, from every level that you've worked. And, uh, board, I'm really, I, I hope that you really enjoy and are, are engaged in this work that we are doing as a district. So thank you for the opportunity to share.
Thank you so much, Constance. So sincere and passionate. Josh?
Thank you as well for letting me speak about why I got involved in Equity Design Team and also the work we've led at Mason. This is my first year at Mason, but this is my fifth year in Tacoma. I believe we can do better as a society. And I think education is the key to that change. I joined the team because I want to help change our outcome for kids. I want to be part of a team that digs into asking the why. Why are things happening the way they are? Asking what are the results our educational systems are getting, and how can we improve those results? I want to help schools so our students continually improve their growth. I also know that to change our outcomes, people living and working within our system need to continually grow and learn. Being part of a team that is transforming the system from the inside out and helping our staff grow by teaching culturally responsive education is why I joined this committee. I basically want to restructure our entire system from the inside out because I'm not happy with the results that we're currently getting with educational systems as a whole. How am I leading this work in a school? I'm new to Mason. I've been here just this year. I was at Northeast Tacoma before here. And this is my, this is my passion. And I'm excited about the work and the incredible team of teachers, coaches, and staff that I'm working with at Mason that want to be part of culturally responsive education. Mason has three areas of focus: social awareness, ownership, and discourse. And those are not kid goals, but those are adult goals, kid goals, community goals. We need our community to change. And by being socially aware and having ownership and discourse, we believe those are the main goals that are going to help us get there. Our professional development and all of our classes are focused on these three areas of focus, especially in remote learning. So far, we've had teacher teams lead book studies on Culture-Sponsored Teaching in the Brain by Zaretta Hammond, Not Light But Fire, How to Lead Meaningful Race Conversations in the Classroom. We've had teachers having conversations with each other. We also have a team that Justina Johnston supported us with, and I really can't thank her enough to fund us. Zaretta Hammond has a year-long professional development, PLC, and Culture-Sponsored Education by Design, PLC. So we are engaged in that work. We saw a ton of growth with the students at Northeast Tacoma when we had this as our focus. And I'm really excited about seeing the growth at Mason as well as the rest of Tacoma, as we deepen our focus around these same principles about equity and culturally responsive education. That's why I'm in this work, and that's what we're doing at the local level of the school, as well as, as a team, trying to make the future better.
Thanks, Josh. So powerful. Kiani Lee?
Good evening, everyone. Just want to first say thank you for allowing me to be here and speak. I really am grateful for the opportunity. I am not, I've been at, this is my third year at Lincoln. I was a teacher at Jason Lee for five years. Left to start my admin career in a different district and came back because Tacoma is where I wanted to be. And so as far as equity work goes and my why, I've been immersed in equity work and social justice and culturally responsive teaching and education for the last nine years, really. And this is my 11th year in education. I started this work at Jason Lee. And so it's, it's my passion. But to get into some specifics, we, bottom line, we can't close opportunity gaps if we don't do this work. We can't say that we're truly educating students, especially historically marginalized groups of students, if we don't do this work. It's because systemic and institutionalized racism is still very much tightly woven into the fabric of this country, and that includes education. And in order for us to really undo all of that, we have to do this work. It goes back to what Joshua was saying, from really revamping the system from the inside out. That is my belief, is that we have to do it from the inside out. We have to tear it down and rebuild it because we have to think about the history of this country and what, what it was built on. And so if I don't do this work, that means that I'm complicit. I can't be complicit. I also think about my own experiences in the public education school system and what I was denied. And I can't, as an educator, walk the hallways of any building or be a part of any district and not, and not afford students the opportunity that I was denied, which was to learn about me. I can't allow for those false narratives about Black and Brown people to continue within the public education system. So for me as an educator, and especially as a leader, the reason why I do that work is because that is, this is my passion, is to revamp those things and to change those things, to work to decolonize the curriculum so that Black and Brown students can see themselves, can see the genius that lies within their communities and within their histories and not keep being fed the same false narratives that I was fed growing up in the public education school system. I was 30 years old before I came across the book, The Autobiography of Malcolm X, and that's when my journey started, at the age of 30. And that's not okay. And I can't allow that to happen to other students as an educator. And so like Dr. Pedro Noguera said, if you don't know who he is, I encourage you to, to discover him because he is absolutely wonderful. He's one of my go-tos, and I've been to five different, either workshops or conferences where I've seen him speak. And one of the things that has always stood out to me is he says, the future of this country is determined by what we do in schools. The future of this country is determined by what we do in schools. So that's that 30,000-foot view that I always come back to. If, when we think about the changing demographics in this country, the changing demographics that we see taking place within our own district and within our own schools, what does that mean for the future of this country if we continue to teach in such a way where cultures aren't, we aren't being responsive to the different cultures and to the different backgrounds and to the diversity in our buildings? What does that really mean for our country? So in order to change that, this is why, this is why I do this work. And how I do this work at Lincoln, I walked into a building that has a really great, strong social justice lens. So for me, it was about adding that culturally responsive lens. And so that's why I'm thankful to be on this team and that we are doing this as a district as a whole, as far as really focusing on culturally responsive teaching. And so as an instructional admin lead at Lincoln, that is how I, how I lead this work, is by doing the culturally responsive work, using, with the teachers and with our instructional coach, using the, using Hammond's book.
Thank you, Pam. Thank you, Kiani. And next, Justina is going to take us through just an informational piece that kind of defines some of the modules that we look. Justina has been a constant through this work in Tacoma for years and years. And somebody said that she's done it everywhere she's been, from, you know, from the school building to the central office building. And so I appreciate her so much because she's stuck with us when we've been stuck. And she's the one that's always saying, hey, let's go a little further. So thank you, Justina.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody who mentioned me. I appreciate that so much. I thank you for just allowing me to be on the team. I love it. And I think the board for allowing us to kind of talk a little bit about what the team has been doing. So this first slide here is really highlighting the article and some of the framework foundations that we use. The article we explored at the beginning of our time together pointed out four components of equity. The author defined equity and equality as two very distinct terms. And in preparation for designing our teamwork, we wanted a very quick reference material by which we could use to develop a common language and practice around what it means to approach issues from an equity lens. We also aligned our work to the Cell 4D Dimensions of School Leadership, the AWSP Leadership Framework, the most recent Interstate School Leadership Licenseur Consortium standards, or ISLIC standards, and the Cell 5D Dimensions for Teaching and Learning. So we are aligned with all of the most state, the most latest state frameworks. Next slide. We worked collaboratively on two resources to support district-wide equity, learning, and leadership. One set of resources, broken into three parts, are the Professional Learning Modules. The Leading with Equity Pre-Work Module emphasizes self-reflection in the areas of cultural awareness, bias, microaggression, asset versus deficit-based mindset, and low expectation. Module 2 highlighted the importance of differentiation and instruction and assessment. And Module 3 focuses on valuing families and student voice. To provide ongoing support for the modules, we also have professional development for which leaders and learners can register throughout the year. So three of those PDs are Going Deeper, Module 1's Part 1 and 2. Those were held in the fall. Crucial Conversations, Racial Equity Leadership Sessions are ongoing. And Cultivating Genius Book Study is upcoming. And if you want to learn more about these and other resources, please visit our internal Equity Toolkit website because that's phenomenal also. And the modules are found on the District-wide Training page. And the upcoming PD can be found on the Equity Toolkit on the homepage as well. So lots of resources for our employees of Tacoma to stay focused on the work. Next slide, please. Most importantly, I wanted to highlight this work is being done at all levels. Cabinet members are actively completing a four-step engagement process as a team. After delving into the components of Module 1, their leadership and expressed desire they have to engage more demonstrates the importance of all of us being on this journey together. And they are leading by example, and for that, we're grateful. Next slide. And my last slide, my last slide is basically really to highlight the goal of moving equity work from the head to the heart. The members of the equity team know equity is not an initiative or a separate entity. The team members know that it is not more work, but the work. And our charge as a team is to support the district-wide understanding and commitment to leading with equity in mind. And so that is what our work has been. And that is what hopefully we're all continue to engage in over the next few months as we figure out how to as we figure out how to be even more of a support and making sure that we're rolling out and implementing some of these professional development opportunities and opportunities to learn with fidelity. So that's it for me.
Thank you. Thank you, Justina. We can always count on you to pack a lot of good, solid, worthy information in a little bit of time. Thank you for doing that. We appreciate it. I'd say Justina and Marie have been, you know, spiritual, factual, motivating forces in our design team. Everybody's had an incredible role, but I've always appreciated Marie's ability to push me forward and to also say, hey, okay, it's time for us to go to the next step. So Marie, will you tell us what the next steps are?
I would love to. So these are a few of the next steps that the team is engaging in. We are in the process of creating three Part B modules. So we did send you our framework that we hoped you had a chance to take a look at. And the Part B modules are going to take our staff, our administrators, more deeply and intentionally into the framework to align the teaching and the learning that went behind those first round of modules. So that is work that our team that you've met this evening is engaging on. That's our next step. In addition to that, a small subcommittee of our team, along with some other educators that we've pulled in, are in the process of collecting short videos of our own TPS teachers using effective culturally responsive teaching practices in the remote environment. We've had a lot of requests for supporting teachers to help engage our students in the learning. So we are putting together this video library and it's going to be made available to all Tacoma Public School teachers, preschool through 12th grade, and it will be housed on our internal website. We'll be sure to get you information on that so that you can see it and see all the pieces that go along with it. In addition, Justina's already mentioned the incredible professional development that is being offered out of her department and in other departments as well. We have Jamad supporting and leading with Justina, the Crucial Conversations Racial Equity Leadership Series, which is an outstanding, outstanding series. As Justina said, there's a Going Deeper with Module One for our staff to participate in, as well as Cultivating Genius, Zaretta Hammond's new book, which has also facilitated that book study by Justina Johnson. And then we have Dr. Natasha Wyatt, who's also putting together, it's called the 28-Day Challenge, Walking Through Me and White Supremacy Book Study for our district. In addition, we continue to offer support to our building leaders as they implement this equity work in their schools. Several principals, as you heard earlier this evening, have become quite creative and innovative as they've provided opportunities for continued learning in this remote environment that we're living in. Finally, the team is engaging right now in conversations about Phase Two of the equity work. So we consider our framework and the PD you've heard about, as well as some of the PD we're developing, our Phase One work. And we are now embarking on Phase Two, designing that with some detailed plans and timelines. And you will be sure to get more information on that once we have that cleared up a bit and we'll be sure to share it with you. So those are just some of the next steps that we are working on as a team. It's an amazing, amazing team. We meet monthly, sometimes two or three times a month, depending upon how our deadlines are approaching. But this is a team that's all in and we are grateful for the time that these building leaders are giving and spending to benefit every single student in Tacoma Public Schools.
Thank you, Marie. Thanks so much. I hope, Board of Directors, that you can appreciate the amount of time it took this team to take all the things we've been doing since work that started in 2019 and bring it to you in kind of this concise manner to let you know what it looks like. We know, we're excited and we're happy, we're so glad that you're coming here today to talk about what your next steps are with the board. These three questions, we don't expect to have answers to them today, but we just want you to consider it as you go through the, you know, the further steps of your own conversation about how does the board's work, equity and social, how does your goal around equity and social justice align with the work that we're doing? I hope that as you went through it, you saw all the different intersection places. And we want you to think about, and we want to help with the answers to how the board can help us move this work forward because we know that it is your leadership that has gotten us with the, first of all, the equity policy in the first place and the environment that allows us to push this work forward. And then how can our equity design team support the board? We want to make sure that you have an opportunity to have this continued professional development. I know that some of you have been involved in some work with Jamad Kenley, and that's so exciting. And we want to offer you an opportunity to pick up some more because it's very, very critical. And it gives so much context to the work that we're trying to do. So thank you very much. Any questions for any of our team member? Thank you. You did a great job. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Carla. Before I open it up to questions from members of the board, because I know that folks have questions and comments, I'm sure, because we always do. I just want to acknowledge again, all the work that's gone into building this process, building the modules, building, just coming together to create a vision for the work. And I just want to acknowledge the members of the team for that and to thank you all for it. And then too, for just members of the public, it is 6:40 on a Thursday night and I see at least 30 members of the team logged into this meeting. So I just want to acknowledge that too and appreciate you all for dedicating this time. And just in terms of those questions that we have teed up, I know that we don't have them on the screen anymore. But I think that they're the exact right questions. Part of the reason why we wanted to have this presentation tonight is because the board has identified racial justice and equity as one of its goals for this year. But we needed to know like where the team was heading and where your vision was for this work as we think about our role as policymakers and how we can help enable and support the work and also how we can help to eliminate barriers that currently exist in our policy structure and procedures and the way that we engage and work in the district. So this is great context for us. And I think that as we continue to have conversations about our goals and where we're going, we can answer that first question together. And then secondly, your second question around how can we support you? I think we're open to hearing thoughts from the team tonight, just thoughts that might be bubbling up already. And we can continue this conversation as the work continues to unfold. And I don't remember now what was on the screen. I have it up on my own screen. But I just want to say, I think this is a good time for us to be having this conversation because the board is clearly committed to moving this work forward from our, within our scope of authority. And we want to be supportive of what you all have already got moving. Lastly, I'll say before opening up for questions or comments from the board, I can't not acknowledge our Lincoln Aids. And I just want to acknowledge because our new member, board member Cory Strozer is an Abe and Jamai Camley is an Abe. So I'm not saying that most of our schools are better than any one. Go Abe. So I just have to acknowledge that. So before, I'll just stop there, but open it up to members of the board for questions and comments. Director Bondbright, do you have questions or comments for the team?
Wow. I have to just say I'm overwhelmed with the, with excitement about what I heard tonight. We've been asking the superintendent and for a while to brief us because we're, you know, picked this as a goal. We all really are passionate about it and we've wanted to know what you guys were doing. And she said, well, it's, it's complex and we'll get, you know, we'll get to you, we're going to get to you. And wow, did you. So thank you so much for, I just feel incredibly inspired by the work you're all doing and so grateful to each and every one of you for being so passionate about this work and for spending the time and energy to help guide us through this pathway forward. I think within my first couple of weeks or month on the board, I had the opportunity to do a session with, an 11 event sessions with Jamad and was so engaged in that process and I'm so thrilled to know that he's leading us through this. And so just I want to say thank you to everyone. And, and I also want you to, to know that I'm thinking about this as what you just shared with us and what you guys are doing for Tacoma Public Schools and how we're looking at our own internal work around equity and racial justice and also around culturally responsive education. And I'm, I'm learning from that and I'm trying to apply it. And I'm representing the, along with Andrea Cobb, the other membership on JMAC, which is the Joint Municipal Action Committee. And we're actually in the midst of developing a project, which you're going to initiate in January, which is going to be actually looking at how all of the entities that are part of JMAC, which are the City of Tacoma, the Pierce County, Tacoma Public Schools, Metro Parks Tacoma, Pierce Transit, the Puyallup Tribe of Indians, and the Port of Tacoma, which are all elected bodies, have each representative, two representatives on JMAC. And we are really focused on working collectively on our approach initially towards COVID and how responsive to COVID, but completely through the lens of equity and racial justice. And this is something that has not happened before with JMAC that we've all been thinking so focused and in a funneled manner on this. And so I'm really excited that we're all doing this work individually in our entity, in our, in our separate groups, but also bringing that learning to the broader community. So I want you to know that, and it just so happens that we are becoming, we're taking on the chair role of JMAC in January. And so I will be the chair of JMAC at the same time that we're doing this work. So pretty exciting that we're going to be able to take you and, and what you're doing and be able to highlight it for the rest of the community. So just want to thank you and let you know the spotlight's going to be on us. So that'll be awesome. So thank you for your work. I'm not, I don't really have any questions. I think I'm just trying to absorb it. So I'll let others talk.
Thank you. Director Keating, do you have comments or questions for the team?
I don't, well, I do have one question, but I just want to, as I was listening to the names and looking at the people that are a part of this committee, many of them I've worked with prior to being on the board in working towards inclusion and equity and safety for LGBTQIA students. And so it's really exciting for the number of years that I've known a lot of folks here that like, there's some really critical, important work that's happening. And I'm really grateful to be here to help continue to support and advance this work on behalf of our students and staff and which will better our community. So it is really inspiring and it's, I also am feeling a sense of relief at the same time that this has culminated to be a priority from, as Jamad said, from the top down because it, it doesn't have the same context or impact if it's not being modeled and valued from the top leadership. So, and Director Bondbright and I got to participate in the spring in the series that Jamad put together with his organization. And it was so powerful to work and do that work alongside staff throughout the district and have, to have multiple schools that were participating all together as staff. It's, I'm not seeing work like this being done in other places, which isn't to say it's not. It's just really meaningful to see it and be, to see it up close and to be a part of it. And I just was really touched by Constance's comments. And I have a question around the land acknowledgement. And I was, as I was reading through it and processing it, there was a, a lot, a part of it where it says, it shows, I can't remember the words. I don't have it in front of me, but it's about having gratitude that the Puyallup Tribe allowed us to be on these lands. And when Constance was talking about acknowledging the harm that's been done, I'm curious about like the, what, when I think about the historical context of indigenous people in this land, they, they weren't given, they weren't given the autonomy to say whether or not, who could or couldn't be on their land. Their land was stolen from them. And there was an attempted genocide while at the same time. So I, I'm curious about, and not being indigenous, it's not my place to have criticism or judgment. I just am curious about the context and whether or not that would be potentially offensive to say that they allow us to be on this land. And I'm saying us in the general sense and with the wording of that. So I would just be curious to hear a little bit more about the, the context of how the land acknowledgement in its current iteration came to be and whether or not the Puyallup Tribe was considered or not considered, but consulted in the creation of it.
So I know for sure that we've worked back and forth with David Seif to make sure that, and we actually had the Puyallup Tribe look at the statement. And I think the person who is best, best has the most information about it is you, Justina. Can you address it a little bit?
Sorry. Sorry, I had a mute. No, I am definitely not an expert in this area. I do want to say that the treaty is that, is, is, is the going through the process of allowing a, the tribe allowing the government to use the land. So when they say allowing, they mean a treaty that's signed. And yes, Lisa, you're absolutely right that, that there are several different tribes, not necessarily Puyallup Tribe, but all different tribes who are experiencing the, the, the force, the feeling of being forced into signing treaties or the feeling of being forced to do things or else to then to engage or to then, what's the word that I'm looking for? To be the recipient of violence, trauma, all of the things that oftentimes our government does in order to acquire land and acquire property and acquire the things that they want. And it's not, it doesn't always feel good. And those are the things that we oftentimes leave out of the history books. And so, yes, you are absolutely right to think about how might the Puyallup Tribe feel about the statement and that piece of it about allowing us to use the land? That was a very thoughtful question. And it kind of just really goes back to the treaty and what's being signed. But we also know in reality that there are also things that also influence treaties, right? And outcomes and all of that. So thank you for taking into all of that acknowledgement. And David will definitely be somebody that is a resource for more information regarding that. So I, I suggest that you reach out to him if you want to actually make connections with the Puyallup Tribe. I'm a part of their newsletter. I just join their newsletter just so that I could learn more myself. And so there, there are resources out there that he can, he can associate you with.
Thank you, Justina. I did spend some time on the tribe's website and just today, like in preparation and considering the treaty or, excuse me, but the land acknowledgement. And so I did, I did reach out to someone that I do have a relationship with at the tribe. But I just was, again, not knowing the context of how the statement came to be. It was just something that stood out to me and I just wanted to bring that forward. So thank you very much.
Do you have any other comments, Lisa? Okay, thank you. Director Strozer? No, or yeah, Director Strozer, you're on my list first.
No, I don't have no questions or I don't have any questions. However, I did want to make a comment that I noticed, and I tried to get a quick count of the amount of people that's on the Equity Design Team, whose name was on the presentation. I think it was like 19 or 20. And I think it's absolutely amazing that folks can come together honoring each other's passion to do this work and move the work forward and move the topic forward. And one thing that hit with me is talk is one thing, but the action is really what speaks. And the action behind everything that's been put together right now, everything that was presented right now is amazing. So I just wanted to thank everybody whose name's on that list, folks who didn't make the list, anyone contributing to moving this work forward.
Thank you. Director Leon?
Yeah, thank you for the full team's presentation. We have known that good work has been, been going on for some time now. So it's, it's nice to have it encapsulated like this. And obviously the work is progressing and improving and the knowledge is being disseminated. I think many of you have brought this forward already as you spoke, but this work in equity. but this work in equity, as you mentioned, is really so primal and upfront and really should be job one, like really job one. Like the thing we think about first, we should think about how education is delivered. How is it getting to everyone in a way that they can absorb the knowledge and get to the next step equally, right? And if we're not doing that as a primary thing, it's like turning on the light switch when you get to school, like opening up a book, it's the first thing everyone should be thinking about. And as you said, many of you said, Mr. Kam said, it's not checking box. It is really primary work, not just in schools, in healthcare and in many, many places in our community. And as you mentioned, making it a requirement, perfect, we must. And making it a common language, exactly what the superintendent said. Yeah, I think that, it said, Mr. Zarling, it said, you know, the re- kind of restructuring of the cultural responsiveness being key to him, one of his keys. Ms. Lee talked about, I love this term, decolonize the curriculum. That was, that was perfect. I mean, I think it's something really important. We need to be truthful about where, what has been happening in history as Director Keating has talked about. The lands were stolen, you know, they weren't, they weren't just given over or borrowed for a long term. So I think that I'll come to some questions here too, but I think that these points are just so important to remember that this is primary and something that everyone, all the staff, and as we teach the students, think about this and how we teach them and they get a better education for them to go into the world and be thinking about equity and whatever, you know, jobs and education you need to go on and do. So I think as, as we talked about, you know, kids, kids arrive, we gotta think about how kids get to school, you know, the transportation, what do they do when they're in school? How are they learning? How are they being assessed? Is it equitable? When they leave school, you know, we, we kind of, people still call it homework, but I think maybe a better term would be, you know, out of school learning. It's not just things you do at home. You could do it at a job, you could do it at extracurricular, you could do it in nature. How are you learning out of school and how are you learning in school and is it equitable for everybody? Access to, to jobs is key and critical. Something I learned today that many of you probably already know about this College and Career Leadership Institute that exists in the Washington State here. They have some recent data that they've compiled from schools, secondary schools in Seattle and mostly South King County area. I don't think our schools are included in that data. But something that struck me from this newer research that they've done is that students aspire to go on to apprenticeship second and fourth, or second, two and four year higher education. They aspire to do that at ninety-five percent, at a rate of ninety-five percent, right? So ninety-five percent of the kids really want to go do those things. Ninety-three percent of those kids expect they're going to do them. That's a very high number still that expect they're going to do. These are kids of all, all kids. But the staff, when they studied the staff in these schools, seventy-seven percent of the staff thought that the kids aspire to it. It's a big discrepancy in the staff thinking that those kids wanted to move on. And sixty-seven percent of the staff actually expected those kids to move on into a, an apprenticeship or a two or four year school. But there's a big difference also in what our, our staff, this was a study up north. But I'm imagining maybe there are similarities, not just here, but around, around the region in that. So I think it's something to think about as we talk about this equity is, is really allowing and educating the staff too, that these kids have these dreams and aspire to do these wonderful things going on for the next institution. So my question would be maybe to each one of the principals or anyone else, her heart could also, maybe I'll just name a few names, because what are, give us a barrier, give us a barrier that you think the board can help you with right now. I mean, we, we're talking about, their barriers still exist. So I would like to hear a couple of barriers that the board or maybe you're already working on them, maybe you need more support from the board. So I don't know. Maybe Ms. Lee can give us one and Mr. Zarling can give us one. I'll pause there.
Anyone who, who feels like they have an answer, chime in.
Yeah, Ms.
Keanu, you want to jump in?
I'm trying to narrow it down. He asked for one.
There are many, I know. So I was going to give.
Yeah, there are many barriers. Goodness, you know, I think when I, when I think about the demographics specifically that are served, we're just working in an urban school district, you know. When I think of barriers, I, I think of things that it comes down to just resources, just having the resources. For example, I'll just, I just had a conversation, if anybody's familiar with our librarian and the work that she's done, Kristen Sierra, it's amazing, right? So I had an epiphany last week and she looked at me like I was crazy. But for me, I was like, how do we take what she's created at Lincoln and make, and reflect that in every library across Tacoma? I look at the selection of books and I'm a reader. If I could have had that growing up, I mean, it would have changed my whole world as a black girl growing up in the public education school system. So just access to books, a diverse, just a diverse selection of books that reflect. I mean, she, I was looking, she has all of the, all of the series on, you know, how you have Howard Zen, the People's America, she has them all for LGBT, for black women. It's, it's amazing. And, you know, I think that every, all of the students in Tacoma should be able to walk into schools and walk into a library and have that access to such a diverse range of literature, his, you know, fiction and nonfiction. And so for me, it comes down to a lot of times resources, but that's just an example of how do we, you know, that's a barrier, right? Just that, and you talk about literacy, right? So that's literacy. I told her, I said, you know, it's, it's promoting literacy beyond the classroom. Because if a student can walk into a library and be able to choose something like, wow, I'm really interested at, wow, that's a reflection of me, right? You know, teachers send me testimonials all the time about the books that they're able to choose and read and students have access because students have come to them and said, this book changed my life. I didn't know this, right? And so it just touches my heart. So when I think about barriers, I just think about things like that, you know, resources. But that's just a specific one with regards to how do we create libraries in every single one of our schools that look like, I don't know how many that are out there. I just know Lincoln. And I don't know if there are any others, but just to be able to have that amount of access to, to, to books that, you know, are reflection of who, not just who you are, but different cultures. We talk about understanding each other, right? We want to understand natives. We want to understand, you know, I, for me, it's all about different, different cultures as well, not just about me, but also access to books that, you know, I can learn about others that are around me. So.
I see Director Keating's hand up.
I just, I'm so excited that Kristen's work was just highlighted. I've been able to partner, partner with Kristen, Kristen for several years. And I would say that there are a number of librarians, teacher librarians in the district that have, were, that are working on having really diverse books in the library and not just high school, but I know multiple elementary school librarians that are also doing the same thing. So I think that making sure that we're framing that, access to that, the representative litera- literacy starts at elementary school. And there are some really amazing things. And I know Project Lit just got started at Jason Lee a week and a half ago. So, and I think Stewart Middle School also has Project Lit, but that's another, another touch point that, and I realize that's operations, not our, not, not our lane, sorry Carla. But just like that, having access to programs like that is so important and really life changing. So I'm just excited that Kristen's work was, I'm a fan. So I just wanted to comment.
And I'm looking at the time and I want to keep this moving, but I don't want to, moving through the agenda, but I don't want to cut this conversation off. So I feel like the question that Carla and the team posed on the slide about barriers was great. And I'm glad that Director Leon teed us up for that. And my sense is that many of you have many ideas about these. So really would be great to get them like on paper so that as we continue the conversation here, we have that concrete from you all to, to reflect on. So I maybe let one other person chime in on the question and Director Leon, if you had additional questions, maybe one more. And I have a couple comments just about presentation and my kind of questions. And then we gotta keep moving. But thank you all so much.
Constance, do you want to take that one?
Thanks, Josh. I appreciate that. I would just say that one of our key barriers, this connects to what Director Leon said, is our adult mindsets and beliefs. And just to reiterate that that's a challenge. I think when we come to our, our work, we have to have a, a common understanding of what the work really is and that, and what the, what's possible for the work for our students. If we're focusing on meeting the needs of the students who are least successful, then we're framing it as if, as if they are less. Our framing even has to come from a desire, not where they, not from a deficit. And when we're working together in our various positions, whether we're driving the buses, meeting the students, teaching in the classroom or leading the school, when we're working together, we have to see them for who they are and who they're going to be, not from a lack, but from a belief and of a deep love and commitment as a community to the wellbeing of kids. So that to me is the core work that maybe is hard to put your finger on as what specific actions can we do? But there are specific actions that we can, we can engage to really have a desire frame in our work with our students.
Director Leon, did you have any other thought? I have a, okay. Well, I appreciate Constance.
Maybe just thank you, Constance. I mean, that was just beautifully said. I mean, so that really people understand this is a way of changing the dynamic of how we think as educators and the potential, I don't use the words desire, right? Not deficit. So we gotta think of the desire that the kids have. So thank you for your energy there and your leadership. And just, I don't speak any other languages, but just, I'm not going to repeat everything I said. Para lo que habla en español, estamos hablando sobre equidad, no, algo que es igual. So tiene que ser algo para recibir la misma oportunidad para aprender. Es equidad, es lo que estamos hablando, muy importante para todos. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. I just have a couple of last thoughts that I want to offer. One is that I just wanted it to be clear when we all leave this conversation that the board and the leadership team, including you all principals, are aligned. This is not a situation where anybody needs to make the case. We are aligned. So we need to focus on action and moving forward. No one is needing to be convinced. No one is hesitant about speaking about race. No one is hesitant about speaking about equity. They need to provide equitable access to support for our students to meet the goals that we have for them and the goals that they have for themselves. Nobody is confused about that. So I think I just hope that it's clear that we are all aligned and needing to work together to move this work forward. Secondly, I just want to say that just like we think about providing differentiated support to students and providing kind of a tiered system of support, I think as we continue to see how your work unfolds and as we think about our role as policymakers, I would expect to see from you all that you're thinking through what are like that, what is that tiered system of support staff need in order to be successful in this regard? I think you saw, started to speak to that earlier, but as you think about continuing to develop modules and thinking about where people are on this, you all are clearly the ones who are the earliest in your commitment and you're earliest in the want to build your capacity around this work. So, but some of your colleagues needs some more support and need to introduce to some different text or some different way of thinking in order to get there. So I just look forward to seeing how we start to think about that differentiated support so that we can all get there together. And then my last comment, I took notes because I didn't want to forget. No, those were it. Like this, we are aligned. I just want to thank you all. I appreciate you for the work that you're doing. Please do write down that list of potential barriers that you think are within the board's scope of authority to help eliminate. And we just hope that we can keep having this conversation moving forward. So thank you all. Okay. You're muted, Carla.
Thanks so much for the opportunity and giving us the time. The team was really excited about having this opportunity to come before you. And I think this is going to be so good for, you know, for us to move forward.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're going to shift gears just slightly. Oh, Director Bombright?
I was just going to suggest that maybe we plan, be plantful about getting updates from the group and not just have this be a one-off, but that we're actually periodically, as appropriate, you know, Carla, what you think is, is the right time or the team feels like they have something they need from us or something they want to share. I'd really like to keep it an open conversation. Good. That makes sense.
Okay. Well, we are going to shift gears. So thank you all again for your time tonight. Those of you who are interested in hearing the, staying for the next part of the conversation, please do. But I want to welcome a colleague of all of ours really to the meeting. She's been listening in, so is grounded in the conversation that we've had so far. Her name is Maria Flores. Maria is currently the Executive Director of the Center for the Improvement of Student Learning within the Office of the Superintendent of Public Instruction, so at OSPI. Maria, for many years, has been the lead staff to the State Education Opportunity Gap Oversight and Accountability Committee. Maria has been formerly the Director of Title II at OSPI. She has worked in the Office of School Improvement when it had a different name than it has now. And so she really is, she's worked as, as an off, within the Governor's Office of the Education Ombud. So she's got great knowledge about advocacy in the state. She is very knowledgeable about tribal sovereignty. So all these things, Maria is just kind of a, a Jill of all trades. And it's not that she does a little bit of everything slightly well. She does a lot of things really, really well. And so in addition to her role at OSPI, Maria is also our colleague in terms of being a WASD member. She was elected to the Olympia School Board last year. And so I just thought it would be great as we reflect on the work that, this great work that's being led by our staff team for us to get grounded in more of the policy and what's happened at the state level related to questions about equity and racial, closing racial opportunity gap so that we can balance some of that statewide context with where we want to go as a board moving forward. So I want to invite Maria to join us. Maria, are you still there? You can turn on your video.
I'm here.
Okay, great. I can't see you. You're not showing up in my screen yet. Do others see Maria? No, you do.
I'll see her.
You do?
They come down on the bottom.
I see her. Okay. Oh, there you are. Okay, now we see you. I see the top of your face, you know, like a slight adjustment. Okay, so welcome, Maria. You've heard the conversation that we were just grounded in. So I just, I talked to each board member individually a little bit about the context for this conversation. But given your background and experience just at the state level with regard to the work of the EOGIC and other related topics, was hoping you could just spend a little bit of time grounding us in that context as we think about our overall goal around racial equity and equity more broadly moving forward. So I'll give you a floor.
Thank you, Andrea, and thank you for that introduction. That was lovely. So I am going to talk a little bit about some of the work that we've done at the state level and trying to kind of, as you were talking, I was taking notes about the work that Tacoma has done that's relational, that's instructional and then structural and institutional. And I'm going to try to focus a little bit on relational and instructional, but mainly I'm going to talk about institutional racism and the ways that we have been trying to dismantle it at the state level and some considerations for you as a board. One thing that Andrea mentioned is I'm kind of a policy wonk, but I also used to be a teacher. And so I'm going to be modeling my best teacher strategies with you. So those are our objectives for today. Are there any questions for us? Anything else that you want to hear from me? I'm also going to talk about the EOGIC just a little bit so you can have that context. And I mean for this to be a discussion, so I don't know what your protocol is for talking, but if you have questions as I'm going through it, please just engage. Don't save them for the end. So as you go through your work, one of the things that I want to have you consider is the concept, the concept of legitimacy. Is um the cons- the the concept of legitimacy, and so. Obviously, everyone that has been on this call today is completely, it sounds like bought in. But you are going to be in the broader community with trying to establish that concept of this is a legitimate cause. And I bring that up because the Opportunity Gap Committee, the Educational Opportunity Gap Committee. Um was created about eleven years ago. It's bipartisan and bicameral, so. Members from both the House and the Senate and Republicans and Democrats, although the Rs don't show up as much. Um it has representation from the Commissions on Hispanic Affairs, African American Affairs, Asian, Pacific Islander. And the Governor's Office of Indian Affairs, so it is like institutional and legitimate. The governor appoints people to this committee. And this committee took ten years to make the Opportunity Gap legitimate in Washington State. With statutory influence, with governor appointees, because there was so much resistance in public education about talking about race. It was much easier to talk about poverty. And poverty is not a proxy for race and institutionalized racism, as you know. If it's an intersectionality sort of issue, but it is not a proxy, so. As you go into this work, I'm gonna talk a little bit about sort of some basic civil rights considerations for the board. Um as you know, in Washington, we have more protected classes than the federal uh protected classes, which is fantastic. We have gender identity, gender expression, so much more than we do federally. And that bare minimum of just due process and civil rights compliance, that is the floor, that is the absolute minimum that every district has to do. I want to push you to think about your policies with um an intersectional lens to get a little bit past the floor. So a couple of considerations for you. Um many, I've looked at some of your board policies and some of them look like they're exactly WASDA model policies that you've just adopted, which is fine, because my board does that too, we just adopt the WASDA model policy. But the model policies are the floor, and there's more that you can do in in your policies to take it to the next level. So one thing that I would suggest, um there's two big civil rights concepts that I'm sure you're aware of, disproportionality and disparate impact. Disproportionality is the easiest thing, and we've gotten really good admiring the data. Um here's the disproportionality, this is disproportionate, disproportionate amounts of Latino students are expelled, all of those things. The next level of disproportionality is for a board to establish some metrics around what is significant disproportionality. So not just we're going to admire the differences, but what do we consider a threshold of significant disproportionality that triggers us looking at it? Another concept is this idea of disparate impact. How many of you guys know about disparate impact? I don't want to assume prior knowledge, Andrea, okay, A plus, she always gets the gold star, um. So disparate impact is the hardest one, disproportionality taken years for us to get to a place where everyone has a data dashboard, they know how to see the disproportionality. Disparate impact in civil rights law is the idea of a policy or a practice or procedure that is neutral on its face. That has disparate impacts when you analyze the data by race, by poverty, by sex. And people, this one always seems to get hard to understand, so I'm gonna use my classic example of student discipline, which. Um is an area that I've worked tirelessly on the last eleven years. Um most. School dis- or student discipline policies, even prior to the passing of fifteen forty-one, which was the bill from the Opportunity Gap Committee. Would have the due process requirements in it, and it's stuff like, you know, it takes three days for you. Um the parent is notified in writing, the parent has three days to appeal the discipline. Um and language around, you know, what needs to be turned in to the district office by five P M, close the business on the last day. Seems pretty fair, right? Is it neutral? What, on its face, it's neutral on its face, but disparate impact means, so the purpose of having the five P M on the third day is for the due process timeline. How many people can take off of work, write a letter, write a letter in English, write a letter that is, you know. Appropriately legal citing why they're appealing the discipline um infraction and deliver it to the physical office by five P M on the third day. If the purpose of the policy is to establish a timestamp, there's this little invention, it's called email, it's timestamps, everything. That's one of those moments where doing a disparate impact analysis of your policies to find where are their assumptions about the students? Or the or the families and how they can interact with this policy that not everyone can. And you're not gonna know all the answers, this is where you gotta take it to the community and actually open yourselves up for that dialogue. Um but that one is one of the classic examples that I use for disparate impact. Um when I was an ombudsman, uh my job, I was neutral, so I didn't take either side, but I was listening to. Families who were struggling, there was a conflict with the school, families struggling, the teachers, the superintendent, everyone's struggling and just. Working through the problem, and those type of little moments were the things where everything broke down and the policies themselves were desperately impacting students of color. And students who lived in poverty. So I want to challenge you to do a disparate impact analysis, it's not as sexy as cultural competence modules. Or book studies, all of that relational work has to happen, but this is where you and your authority for policy setting can. Set some expectations that are endurable, that are durable, that will endure after you're on the board and will be structural. I'm gonna pause there for a second. Any questions about that first concept?
Okay. Um I don't, I don't have a question, but I'd um Maria, I'd like just to make a comment, it's very timely. Because we have just been discussing that uh we want this year to take on, look, going through our board policies and give them a um an ethics review, basically, um um. And so that is, uh you have now given us a new way to look at it, um so thank you, or not a new, I'm sure. I'm sure Andrea would have come up with that, but but just that it's it's something that's more impactful, so thank you for that.
Yeah, I know, and I I appreciate that, and in my state role, I've worked with WASDA over the years to try to. Um give a lot of input on their model policies and have them consider things like this um in the way that they've set them out for districts to. To adopt them. Um I think one of the other things, so along with doing that kind of policy audit. Um and I mentioned dispute resolution, so here's another thing, conflict happens. Conflict happens in schools, conflicts happens at a district. You show your commitment to the rights of students and equitable access by having a fair, transparent dispute resolution process in case things happen. Um so both for complaints with special ed, discipline, all of those things, we know that our students of color are most disproportionately. Um disciplined than any other group of students. We know that sometimes our students of color are disproportionately identified for into certain qualifying disabilities that perhaps they shouldn't be in, like emotionally behaviorally disturbed. Um and those type of dispute resolution things are just another structural layer to this. Um so the other thing I wanted to talk about, I was really happy to hear from all of the um principals and the super and the superintendent about um. The framing and moving from deficit to asset based framing. Think about a communication audit too, this is how families see themselves in your data and in your school district. So there's um, there's a clothing brand, but I often use the term fubo, for us, by us. And for us, by us, meaning communities of color are not gonna describe themselves in deficit language. I'm not gonna describe myself as a Latina and native woman as marginalized. I will describe myself as what I am, allow and make sure that all of your communication. Take out the adjective, like literally go through some of your written communications and get a red marker and go adjective as to. Cause there are so many, it's pervasive, we say underserved, at risk, marginalized. There's a different way to acknowledge the historical harm that schools have done to communities without. Um then using that language to further um weaponize and hurt the community. So there's a way that you can, but you always need to look at the language that you have as a district and that the onus is back on, and this is hard. The system, back on the education system, back on the way the system has historically underserved students, but I don't even like that term. Allow people for us, by us, to describe themselves how they would choose to describe themselves. I don't think any of us would choose to describe ourselves with negative language. I'm not saying gloss over it and make it all pretty. Because we have to acknowledge the historical harm that has happened, but there's a way to put the onus back on the school and not on children and not on families, because children and families are perfect. They show up with all their cultural assets, their historical content, they show up with. All of their funds of knowledge, their ways of being in the world, and we serve the child in front of us. As a teacher, as an administrator, as a board member, they're perfect, and if you start those. It's amazing, I think, to any person of color, how much all of those words accumulate in your mind. For that self identification and how that inst- in internalized racism affects you for your whole life. I'm forty now, I'm just unpacking it. So don't do that to children, don't let your district speak that way to children and families. I think the other thing, um so along with the language that I heard earlier. Um one thing that we're doing at O S P I, we we've set up some, worked on cultural competency training modules. Embedding it in the profession, I was really happy to see how they said they were, it was aligned to your um principal evaluation, we have it now, so everything is structural. But one thing to consider along with the language is we've created a culturally responsive style guide at O S P I, so anytime we write anything, anytime we communicate. We have agreed upon ways that we talk about people, about framing issues, so that we are not further weaponizing. Community, all those words make people not want to show up, not want to participate, makes you feel disenfranchised and not part of the community. Um the other thing I would say with this as well, so I'm not sure where you guys are on this, but the idea of engagement in your community. If you're gonna, with your equity work, engage in your community beyond regular board meetings, consider caucus, doing caucuses, affinity caucuses. Um so the idea of that being that you would, with a cultural responsive facilitator, hopefully of that identity. Be able to set up some spaces for people to meet and talk as African American parents, as Latino parents. Um it's intersectional, people can self identify into many groups as they want, but sometimes making space. Where you can talk with people who have a similar life experience allows you to engage in a way that you can't when there's. Power asymmetries in the room, and you all know what that feels like when you walk into the room and you're, you can feel the asymmetry, you know. You know, your relative status to everyone else in the room, or the ways that you might have to, you know, show up. Or for me, it's often the ways I need to make sure that I'm like very calm and rational, you know, don't want to come off as a fiery Latina, I gotta keep it, you know, very centered. It's those ways that we have to show up in the room that are exhausting and are emotional burden for communities of color. And a way that you can set up engaging with them so that they can authentically engage and not feel um uncomfortable in those spaces. Uh for sovereignty, so government to government relationships, um we have also been working really hard on. Um elevating our tribal sovereignty and having the state understand the government to government relationship. Um I appreciate what was said about treaty rights earlier, you should have regular government, you're a government. The government meetings with a job tribe and your other tribes in your vicinity. Um it, there's often liaisons at the school district level, and there's sometimes the tribes have education liaisons. I'm sure that they're already meeting if you have those, but. You, it is a government to government relationship, you are the officials of the government, you need to meet with the tribal leaders. Um in that that level of of officialness, not um. Uh it's it's great to have sort of, you know, backdoor relationships and stuff, but it needs to be in public space, it needs to acknowledge the gravity of that relationship, that it's government to government. Um so those were just some thoughts I had listening to you. I am really impressed by Tacoma, it doesn't sound like you're. You're well, you're well along the continuum, it's not, you know, fluffy equity, it is intentional true equity that assumes you be that you're focusing on. Um a couple of other things, Andrea asked me to talk about the Opportunity Gap Committee, so I'm just gonna say a little bit about that. Um do you want me to pause for a sec Andrea? Okay, you're muted.
No, I think you can finish with your comments about the committee and then we'll open it up for comments and questions.
Okay.
Maria.
So I mentioned it earlier about it's bipartisan bicameral, it, they've been in existence for ten years. Um it started with a, the legislature commissioned a study. And it was given to the Commission on African American Affairs to look at, we called it the Achievement Gap then, the Achievement Gap for African American students. Well, as soon as the other ethnic commissions heard that they were getting this study, all the ethnic commissions got funding to do a study. What was unique, the E O G O A C is unique in the nation because it is the only committee um at this level. That is making policy recommendations for students of color. Made up of almost exclusively people of color who are are identified to represent their community. The studies that were done about ten years ago was kind of a state of the state of the achievement or opportunity gap. And all those studies, another unique thing, and kind of fubo again, for us, by us, they were done by researchers in those communities. The African American uh students, what?
I just want to interject really quickly to say, our own, like Dexter Gordon was one of the co chairs of the African American Committee Report that many of you know. And other names I think would be on some of those lists of folks in the community that you all know, go ahead, sorry.
No, no, that's fine, that's what I want you to do, so yes, so so it, there was a different lens, it was academic, of course. There was uh the legitimacy was there in the studies, but it was the first time. That in state government, we had studies conducted by the people who had the lived experience and also the academic credentials to write these studies. And then we took those studies and we synthesized them, that's what created the committee into a report to the legislature. Um one thing with the Opportunity Gap Committee, the members, many of the members on it, like Representative Sharon uh Tamiko Santos has been on it from the beginning, and she created the committee. Um they are my elders, and they have been working on this since they were young people. And it took all this work to make it legitimate. It was right around the time, if you remember, in No Child Left Behind, people, there's a lot of negative things said about No Child Left Behind. But the one positive thing I will say, it was the first time that we were required to take student achievement data and disaggregate it by race. And show it publicly, and here's the effect of that. There was a lived, known opportunity gap among all communities of color, but because it was communities of color saying it, it was not considered legitimate. Until it was disaggregated for the whole world to see, and suddenly everyone was like, oh, there is a gap. Just like those studies, oh, there is a gap. The frustration by the elders on the committee is that they've been working on this for twenty, thirty, forty years, saying the same thing. And it's only in the last ten years that we've been able to make progress in getting it considered legitimate. Some of the broad categories that they do recommendations on, family engagement, cultural responsive teaching practices. Student discipline, but they uh led all the reforms in student discipline, we used to go have indefinite expulsion, I'm gonna talk a little bit more about that in a minute. Uh they, they have uh recommendations areas around school, school improvement and innovative models to close the gap. Um and forgetting some for some reason, um. Uh why am I fully blanking on it? Andrea, help me out.
Is student support in there?
Oh yeah, student support, so integrated student supports, wraparound services. Um they created the in Washington Integrated Student Support Protocol, which is um basically M T S S. I, they've been looking sort of holistically, and one of the things that's been hard with the committee but really helpful for. Is that they are unapologetically always talking about race. They will not, they, we did a presentation to um, I did a presentation for the Governor Inslee. Uh with results, Washington, where I actually took the historical line graphs, you know, with the students of color and the white students. And then I disaggregated them though by poverty, because I needed to make the point to the governor. Um that if I take African American students in poverty and not in poverty, and I move. That if I take African American students in poverty and not in poverty and I move them apart from each other. So if it's just poverty, once African American students' families got out of poverty, they should be right up here, right? Guess where they were? Were they, were they up at the top? No, they weren't. Because there's institutionalized racism still happening, even when you get out of poverty. If your family was in poverty, there's some different experience you're having in school than other students. And that was a really informative moment at Results Washington with the governor to say, you know, there's something else happening here. It's not just poverty. Most of our policy solutions have been focused on poverty and they should be. I grew up homeless and poverty definitely impacted my life, but there was also racism that I grew up with. And they're intersectional. And once I got out of poverty, I mean, my child now is upstairs with a computer, he's middle income. And they are still dealing with the racism. So, sorry, that was a little bit of a digression, but um, the opportunity gap gets in, uh, the EOJOIC does annual reports to the legislature. They've moved a lot of different policies. One area that they moved that I mentioned was student discipline. Um, we Team Child, which is a nonprofit organization, did two hundred and ninety-five public records requests to all school districts to get their discipline data, because this was before discipline data was required to be collected and disaggregated by race. They did meticulous research to disaggregate it from race to establish there's something going on here with a massive discipline. Um, just disproportionality. And we were able to take, in Washington State, the discipline law hadn't been changed since the seventies. It still had words like punish in it. And we changed the law. It used to be that you could indefinitely expel a kid. You could expel a kid. There was no requirement for them to come back. It could be out forever. It changed it first to one um, academic year and then one academic term. It required education during the exclusion, uh, which was huge. And technically always required because it's nothing that takes away that constitutional right. And that the education during exclusion had to be comparable to what they would have received if they hadn't been excluded. Required a re-engagement plan with family members and wraparound services to be provided if identified. It required the data to be disaggregated. And exclusions for, the big thing was discretionary categories. So discretionary categories are in our discretion as school board members. It's all the things that are not mandatory. Mandatory is firearms, violence, drugs. There's a federal list of mandatory discipline categories. Discretionary is the old term defiance, disrespect. Right? Those are culturally laden words. The way that you view a child and their behavior influences the way that you identify if they've had that misbehavior. We changed those uh, categories to things like failure to cooperate. Which was very specific where a teacher gave a specific request and there was multiple chances to redirect and the student didn't respond. That's different than giving the teacher a stink eye and me as a teacher saying, oh, that kid's disrespectful. Or any other way that a kid could signal disrespect, right? We had to take all that culturally laden language out because it was driving our disproportionality numbers. Our disproportionality numbers were the highest for those categories. We also do not allow any school district to expel um, a student for those discretionary categories anymore. So.
And Maria?
Yeah.
For your context, the board spent a lot of time responding to the changes in the law. And, and we actually kind of pushed beyond WASDA's model policy related to those changes in law. But I think what you just laid out is great context for many of our board members who weren't around for the, the in the time that the law was passed and we were doing the core work to modify the policy. And I think even for some staff maybe, like I was at OSPI working when Team Child did that um, public records request and all that. So I think for team members who weren't there for it all in Olympia, it seemed like it was drastic changes. That kind of came out of nowhere, but you just laid out really great context for how long it took to build the case. And how long it took, I think that bill is introduced several times with different pieces of it moving over the course of many years. How long it took to get to the law and then the work to actually, the work began really to actually implement policies in districts. So I just, you just set, set up great context for that work that we continue to focus on now. Because we continue to prioritize closing um, student um, discipline gaps now. So you made up a great history.
No, that's good. And I think from beginning to end, it was eight years. Two legislative sessions to get the law passed, then implementation, getting all the rules passed. Eight years. That committee has been meeting for eleven years, but those members of the committee who are in their sixties and seventies, some of them have been saying this for forty years. So there's a, a sense of impatience. It's always that quote, you know, it, it's often quoted, but I can't help quote it again. That Martin Luther King Jr. Quote about the arc of the moral universe is long, that it bends towards justice. It took that long to bend it. My child was in kindergarten, they're now a junior. We bent it. And that's the work you have ahead of you. Bend it.
Okay, thank you, Maria. I, I don't know if you're done, but I feel like
I'm done.
Chopping at the bit to ask questions and to give comments. So I want to open it up to members of the board. I always go in some lower orders, so I'm going to go reverse orders directly on. You have comments or thoughts or reactions?
Sure. Thank you for that presentation, Maria. So I think you mentioned lots of places where we could, uh, you know, improve our, our equity, not just language, but implementation. So I think I was interested to hear many things, but you talked about the culturally responsive writing style guide OSPI has, you know, it's uh, some people say, oh, you know, words are only words, you need actions behind them. It's true, but you also need policy and you need the words and then of course you need the actions next. So maybe that's something we can use as we analyze some of our, our policies too. So, um, and the disparate impact discussion you gave us, I think was important to hear, right? As, as you said, many things seem benign until they're put into action. And reality sets in and you look at the aftereffect of who is really being marginalized. So great thoughts and lots of good opportunity for fertile work for us. Thank you. Let someone else go.
Director Strozer? You have comments about?
Again, no, no questions. And really, I, I don't even want to say I got a comment because I don't know how much weight this is going to carry, other than just saying, you know, thank you for your time. I got a lot of notes. I'm not a note taker. I, I like to pretend sometimes, but I got, I got I got some notes on some things that I need to dive into, uh, that, you know, I'm sure would have been presented to me at some point by Andrea. But um, I just thank you for, you know, for coming in and just dropping knowledge on so many different things. Like looking at policies that are, you said that WASDA policies are, are, would you say the floor? And then there's so much room to go up like, and, and here I am, a new board member looking at WASDA like, okay, this is, this is, you know, this is what it is. And I don't want to, you know, diminish what they've done or the work that's done there, but just the way that you laid it out shows that there's always work to be done. So I appreciate you for, you know, spending the time with us that you have and uh, I look forward to diving in and, you know, working toward a fair good change.
Director Keating?
So many feels and thoughts. Um, I just echo like, thank you so much for spending your time as, as a fellow board director and colleague and um, I think there's so much value. And um, we don't have a lot of opportunities to actually collaborate together. So um, and I want to give Andrea the nod that, of, of making this happen. Um, and when you were talking about um, the floor for policy, when I, when I talk about um, harassment, intimidation and bullying around LGBTQIA students and talk about the anti-discrimination protections we have in the state. You know, when I, when I say to educators, like, it, it, it's the moral thing to do. But if you can't do the moral thing, it's the law and the law is the minimum. It is the bare minimum of, and, and we should always strive to be, to do more than that. So um, I am really excited because I'm still um, in my first year in this role and learning how to be a poli, uh, an effective policymaker. So I'm, I'm really grateful for this. And I think, um, as you were talking about, um, uh, Representative Santos and the, the other elders that have been doing this work for so long. It reminds me that I stand here on the shoulders of so many who have been fighting uh, for the rights and safety and protections and just the right to live freely. Uh, that this work I get to do because of those who have um, come before me. So um, I think that that's uh, something that I'm going to just really um, reflect on. So I just want to thank you for bringing that forward. Um, and again, thanks again for your time.
Director Bonbright?
Well, Maria, you're gonna hear this a lot, but we really, really do appreciate you um, and the time that you spent and, and um. Also, I just want to say that, you know, I, I was both daunted by a lot of what you said and also by what the presentation we got earlier tonight from what's already happening at the district and just seeming like, oh, there's just so much here. Where do we start? But I also have to say that a lot of what you talked about, love the cat. A lot of what you talked about actually um, was, was kind of exciting. Because our next piece on the agenda tonight is we're going through our goals and objectives and um, and, and the one we had on racial justice and equity, what we talked about previously was some of these very ideas. I mean, I heard you say, uh, a policy audit review, um, dispute resolution process. A communications audit with culturally responsive communication guide, uh, affinity caucuses and government to government tribal uh, connections and really intentionally doing those meetings. And I look at, at our things tonight and I see almost all of those things on here. But not as, as defined as you made them, not as, um, not bolstered by the information that we learned from you tonight. And so I, I want to thank you because I think what you did was gave, gave us permission in a way or, or a purpose for, and gave, gave gave wings to what we already uh, knew that we kind of wanted to do but didn't know. Um, I, I feel much more urgent about it now and I also feel that I understand. It's, it's not, there's, it's not time to be shy about it or to be, um, I don't want to say careful, that's maybe a bad choice of words. But you know, I think we need to bold, boldly go forward with this work. And um, I, I feel that you gave us that kind of nudge. So, uh, or maybe it was a shove. I really appreciate it, whatever it was. So um, thank you so much and uh, and know that we heard you. Because um, I, I really do think that your time, the timing of this conversation couldn't have been better. So thank you for being here tonight.
Well, I'll just say thank you again to Maria and just my, um, my reflections in this conversation again, like are on the same in the same place where I commented on the last presentation, like this is a unique moment in time where we are all aligned. The board as in its governance role and the superintendent and leadership team and their operational role and in their partnership role, I think we're aligned. I think it's important for us to keep um, having these shared learning opportunities. Because like, I, I say, I throw out RCWs to you all here and there. But it's good for us to all be on the same page and have this shared learning opportunity, like you said, Director Bonbright, to all kind of get grounded. So I really appreciate what you shared, Maria, in the context of the work at WASDA, the work of the committee, the work at OSPI and some resources that live there. Um, I also want to though, um, acknowledge that even though we are all very comfortable with this conversation right now. All members of our community may not be. And I, I want to emphasize right now that I believe that this is the right work for us to do. Because the success of each of our students is critical to the success of all of our students. So we've got to get it right for our students of color. We got to get it right for our students with disabilities. We've got to get it right for our students who's are English learners or who may have parents who are, are English, not native English speakers. We got to get it right for all parts of our community in order for the whole to be right. So I do um, want to acknowledge that just like with our staff and team and they're going to need differentiated support um, to feel confident in their roles of leaders of equity. But our community too is going to, in some parts need to be brought along too. So I acknowledge that and don't want to lose sight of it, but also want to be clear that we have to move this work forward in order for all of our students to be successful. So um, are there any other comments or thoughts from members of the board? Maria, any other last thoughts that you want to leave us with? Um, Director?
No, just.
Oh, go ahead, Maria, sorry.
I was just gonna say I'm grateful and um, I'll have Andrea give you my board email and we can follow up. And I mean it, I mean, we can work together. I love working with other board members. So anytime you ever have a question, just email me.
And just for you, all of your awareness, I think Maria is uh, going to, was appointed to in the last cycle and will continue to be a member of the Legislative Committee representing her region. But um, so if you want to connect with her on that front too.
Yeah, I'm on the WASDA Legislative Committee. Yep.
Director Leon?
Yes, thank you. Um, I just want to just uh, reemphasize, you know, some of the points both of you, many of you have made already. So we've heard the word being aligned, we are. We know that not everybody in the community may be so. But we, we do feel strongly that this is uh, the, the justice equity that has to happen in our community and hopefully the whole country and world, right? So uh, and that many good things in this world have taken a long time to happen. In the description of your legislators working on this for forty years, right? But, and they're not taking away from their work, that they were probably working hard and, and working as fast as they could, but with barriers in front of them. Which uh, you know, as we've heard from Director Bonbright and President Cobb. Uh, we can be bold, right? We can be, uh, we can work on this with more urgency. And it doesn't mean uh, that you throw things into the wind, right? Still do pilot. You can work on projects, make them happen. If they, if you don't get a positive outcome, you retract and, and try something else. But I think that that's something that we can provide, um, leadership wise. I think we have um, support of the superintendent. Of course, and for staff, but if there's something we can do to move processes along. And I'll just give just, you know, an example of this disparate impact that you talked about um, in the past. Something I've been advocating for is healthier start time for secondary education, middle school and high school. Traditionally have started way too early for their health and it has impacted kids of color. Uh, in a, in a negative way. But it's something that is present and not always easy to change. Because there's so many barriers to changing that. So that's just one example of the many things we can consider doing uh, in the future as school gets back into uh, the normal in-person range. Obviously, right now, kids are not um, forced to get up at, you know, six AM to go to school. But that's one of the places where, and there's many others, we have to kind of analyze, not just ourselves, but I'm sure the superintendent's team is going to analyze those things. So thank you for bringing them to us and, and we can, we can move faster.
Yeah.
Thank you everyone.
Thank you. And I, I'm just going to get off now Andrea, but everything that you do right now, sense of urgency, it's a kid's life. You're saving a kid's life, potentially. You're making their life possible.
Thank you, Maria. Okay, and we're going to take you up, anyone who wants to, we'll take you up on the offer to stay connected. So thank you for the work that you do, both in your role as OS, Olympia School Board Member and in your roles, the mini hats you wear at OSPI. Thanks for your time.
Thanks for sharing your knowledge.
Okay, we're going to switch gears one more time to continue our conversation about our annual goals with all, all of this context in mind. So all of you should have received an email with just the summary, draft summary of our previous conversation around ID, uh, goals for objectives related to those three broad um, goal areas. And within those objectives, we tried to capture some of the specific strategies that members um, offered up in our brainstorming conversation. So I just want to open it up now um, to each of you to provide, who weren't in the conversation. Because Director Bonbright and I did our best to summarize it and to try to frame some of the broad comments into the form of objectives. So I'll open it up to um, the three of you first who weren't a part of that um, process of summarizing to offer your thoughts or comments about what we got right, what you think needs to be modified or or just to react more generally to that summary. Uh, maybe start with Director Keating?
I sort of, my brain feels a little full.
Yeah.
Uh, and, and I feel like I wa, I almost need to go back and, and based on this conversation and the presentation we had, um, go back and reflect and reread, um, in terms of, um, thinking of next steps, because what I was thinking before, like, has shifted, um, particularly with the information that Maria shared with us. So, um, I'm going to just list, I would like to listen to others and then, um, can, uh, contribute and sort of formulate my thoughts, um, after that.
You know, we don't have to pressure ourselves to like be specific in just responding to the document now. I'm imagining that others of you might feel the same way. I actually feel the same way too, like I want to think about it. So we can just talk now and react to everything that we've heard. And we can talk specifically about the document if you have specific feedback. But maybe we can all just do our own, um, work to respond, like and track changes or something and share it via email. In that way. So, uh, we can use this time the next, I guess, when we have seven minutes really, how we want to and just try to get to some next steps. And we have plans to keep this goals and objectives conversation going. This, this isn't our last. So I'll go to Director Strozer to offer.
So. Oh, Andrea, can I just say one thing? I, I definitely don't want us to lose sight because I know if we don't come up with some kind of action step, like that could just push it forward. And I don't want that to happen. I just feel like I, my, my brain is, um, saturated. Um, and so I think that, um, like, one of the things that I really think would be, um, a great next step for us is to go through and, and look at policies and the language and there were suggestions of looking at the adjectives in policy and then using the, um, OSPI writing guide and, um, you know, in terms of, um, I just lost my thought. But anyways, like that's something that really, um, feels tangible to me. Um, and may not necessarily answer your question either. I'll acknowledge that. So I'll pause.
Well, in reaction to that, I do think that some of our recommend potential ways forward do speak to how we approach reviewing our policies. But I do, and I don't want to lose sight of that either. That was one of the big things I thought just within our scope of theory we should be doing. But I think we will need some structure to it. So I, I do feel like urgent, like, once we get rolling on it, we can do it. But we do have to decide like which ones are we going to prioritize? Are we going to try to take them all on? Who's going to look at what with what kind of protocol? We need a little structure to it. So I agree with you. That seems very tangible and like something that we as governors need to do. But we need a little, we still need to decide that's our priority, like the objective or an objective of a one, a couple that we really want to tackle in the next six to nine months and move forward on. So I hear you. And we, we do need to leave tonight with an action step or a next step, but it might be an interim step to getting to just what you said. Director Strozer? Comments, thoughts, reactions? No pressure?
I was, I was just going to mention that I did go through it. Um, and I'm kind of feeling very, very almost identical to, to Director Keating here. But I think that based on our last conversation, everything that was captured here accurately reflects kind of what we were talking about. Like there aren't any big gaps or anything like that. I did have a few things that I think that I didn't speak up on, on our initial conversation that I would like to potentially add, but I'm going to send that in a response to the email so that you can kind of look at it and see yeah, that makes sense or know that it belongs somewhere else.
That's great. We use a CC, Director Bondright and I, and maybe we'll take another stab at, um, incorporating feedbacks that we get from each of you. Director Leon? Director Leon, are you still?
Yep.
Okay.
You hear me?
Yep.
Okay, great. So, yeah, I think, uh, it was a good, I mean, a great discussion tonight and I think a good, um, um, recap or not recap, but consolidation of our thoughts from our other meeting. Um, I think that Pete, you know, you, you said, do we work on them all? Do we pick the one or two? Who takes them on? I think that's something we may have not enough time to decide tonight. I think that the racial justice equity, um, topics, I think are probably highest in my, my list at this point. Obviously, social emotional learning is important too, right? Uh, family engagements of, a lot of these can bleed into each other in many ways, right? And they're interconnected as we all know. Um, but I would just say maybe this, you know, racial and justice equity, I think some of that could start. We've gotten some ideas tonight, you know, around, um, the, uh, the affinity caucuses. I mean, we could learn some things there that maybe we haven't heard yet. Um, and then the, the idea about the government, the government official meetings. And we, we do have relationships and meet and, and have discussions with the tribe and other tribes. It's not just the Giald tribe. Um, but I think to have a formal, um, you know, session that, that, uh, topics are, are discussed and policies are set, I think is important. Common language, of course. Um, not just about the, you know, the way we're going to start a meetings and what the proper language is, uh, but, uh, things that are even deeper than that compared to, um, the, the education we're giving to our, our native kids. So, um, love, yeah. And I think, yeah, having some work to work on here. And there's, uh, uh, plenty of things we could work on and deciding on what we're going to take on. What we can do in divisions, board members, and what we can act, get, ask for help of staff. And if we do need help from staff, I know it's, their time is not unlimited, so we have to prioritize. So I'll pause there.
Well, I don't have any more to say. I just think that I would too appreciate the opportunity to take what we heard and go back and look at things and reassess. Um, Superintendent Santorino, do you have thoughts or comments or, um, reflections that you want to offer? I don't mean to put you on the spot, but we have one more minute, so I want to give you some time to circle back with us too.
Um, I think it was a great, that, that was a great combination to hear from the staff and to hear from Maria. And I think, um, I agree with Elizabeth. It complimented itself so, so well. And what it really did for me is it took some of those, uh, OSPI guidelines and platforms and kind of made it real. She, you know, she kind of gave them some animation and some real, you know, work that we can do with them. And I really appreciated that because I think that will go a long way. Uh, you know, to, to exactly the, the goal that we want, which is to elevate this to action and to communicate. I mean, um, was it Constance who said we needed, uh, to, to, to raise our staff to a better place and, and improve mindsets? And I think some of the things she talked about, um, you know, that gave, uh, some vocabulary to it about what it does for students was so helpful. So, um, I'm looking, I'm looking forward to it. I think we, and I think that our, uh, ability to align with your goals and, um, the policy that you want to look at is totally, uh, doable. So worth, very worthwhile to listen to her. That was great. I want to put her knee again.
Yeah. Maria was like my work buddy. So she's my, like, she's, like, when you want someone who speaks RCWs with you, she's your woman. Um, well, I just want to thank you all again for taking the time. Um, if there, I, I feel like there's so many people I wish I could be like, do you have a thought? Do you have a thought? I know everyone can't take the time to express their thoughts and comments, but please, anyone who has some reflections that you want to offer back to the board, please feel free to send those along via email or through Carla and the team. Again, we really do want to hear, um, your thoughts about barriers. I saw a couple of them show up in the chat. So please, um, do feel free to compile those and send them through Carla and the team. And overall, just look forward to continuing this conversation. We'll figure out from the board standpoint a schedule within our committees as a whole or study sessions or, um, other retreats that we have coming up, how to continue the conversation. But look forward to doing it, um, in partnership with all of you. So with that, I will call us adjourned and release you all to the rest of your evening. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. And did someone send us, uh, ideas that you said barriers that were in the chat? I can't access the chat.
Oh, okay. Yeah.